All the selectmen here, is there a motion on the agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
Oh, second, thank you.
Second from Mr. Coolidge. I heard first. Any additions to make? I have one. We need to have a discussion of the Communications Union District per Act 119. That's being proposed as the Otter Creek Communications Union District. I suggest we have it as number 5A. Are there any other additions to be made to the agenda that was prepared?
Did I see a message from Dave that we should include 44 Prospect Street discussion as an agenda item?
Dave, were you going to make that part of your town manager's report or do you want to have an additional item on 44 Prospect Street?
I would prefer an additional item. That way we can start the process or you guys can start the process.
Okay, can we have that? Tim, where do you suggest that? Or Dave, where do you suggest that?
Wherever you guys want it. I want to after my town manager report.
Okay, 3A. Any other changes to be made to the agenda that was presented? If not all in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll do what we have been doing. We will take a vote like that. And if it's unanimous, it's unanimous. And if it's not, we call it the role of the five members of the board. Item two is approval of the minutes. I would like to take them separately. Sorry. Is there a motion to approve the hearing minutes from June 22nd?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Mr. Coolidge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Doug Bailey. Are there any errors or omissions? This was the planning, commission, presentation on flood hazard and river corridor amendments to the DWO. No errors, no omissions. If not, all in favor of approval as submitted, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Doug Bailey abstained.
No, Tracy did.
Tracy abstained.
I didn't get there for the whole thing.
Okay, Tracy abstained. Doug Bailey, did you vote yes?
I voted yes.
Mr. Coolidge voted yes?
Yes.
Mr. Giles voted yes?
Yes.
Hopkins votes yes. Four, zero, and one. Item B is the select board minutes of June 22nd. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Motion for Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Coolidge. Errors or omissions? I don't have errors or omissions, but I do have, I do have a change to make. Charlene does an excellent job. She took the minutes that reflect the language that was used at the meeting. However, it has been brought to the board's attention by a Brandon citizen that we ought to be careful about how we refer to the Hagerty Farm problem and what happened there. And that we ought to be careful not to unintentionally drag in the name of another Brandon family for whom the road happens to be named. So I offer a motion that in each instance where Kimball or Kimball Road appears in the minutes, that it be replaced with the word Hagerty.
Actually, I think it might be more clear to say you want to replace Kimball Farm with Hagerty Farm. Because it's still located on Kimball Road. And so it's possible that Kimball Road will still have meaning.
It's actually not my intention.
Okay.
I, I think that it was, it was a very insightful and useful suggestion that came to the board. And I don't think that there's any benefit to be gained by referring to that situation, that event, by its location, because I think all it really does is dance around the fact of who is accused as being the responsible party.
Okay, I understand.
So I move that change if I can get a second.
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 Second from Mr. Giles and Mr. Bailey. Any discussion on making that change? Again, this is Charlene. This is no aspersion on Charlene taking of the minutes. I'm sure it reflects what actually was said. But we do need to be more careful how we talk about things. If ready to vote, all in favor of making the change to the minutes, removing the references to Kimball and replacing them with Hagerty, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Are there any other errors or are there any errors or omissions in the minutes? If not, ready to vote on the minutes as amended, all in favor of the minutes amended just now, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Was that unanimous? Okay. Item three, the town manager's report. Mr. Atherton.
Gentlemen, this is my report for the weeks of June 29th and July 6th. Most of it is construction work. Segment six, bridge slab removal started. The slab has had, has an abundance of rebar and railroad track in the concrete, so there has been lots of saw cutting and jackhammering. We're hoping that they have the, the first pieces of the slab out they need to get rid of like tomorrow. And then they'll be working on the, on the old concrete. Yeah, I can't even think of the name of it right now. The, the concrete. Pieces or the, sorry, the, the concrete pieces that are going to be replaced with steel. Geez, I'm. Sidewalk pair has restarted, started on Franklin Street with the, with the new coating they're going to put on the top of it. So they started grinding that down last week. Park Street, new water services are being connected to the residence. And this is, was in the paper last week and will be in the paper again this week, that there will be a temporary closing of the Park High Marvel Street intersection on July 21st and 22nd to tie in the new water and sewer main lines. So please plan ahead and seek an alternate route. We will be having some traffic diversions there. Other happenings, the Church Road culvert has been installed and the guardrails should be in this week. They did have to do a little more work in the river per water, the river guys, so that's getting done too. Bike has completed the shim and overlay on Park Street Extension, Corona Street, and the paved portion of Country Club Road. So we're happy they could get here early this year to do that. Rec Department news, they're excited to announce a collaboration with Eric Mallett and the Paramount Theater to create the Jack McCurnan Drive-In Astrobook Park. Thanks to generous donations to the Paramount from Kevin Birchmore, Naylor and Breen, Kevin El Nicky, and the trustees of Public Funds. The 32 by 18 foot screen is slated to be installed in the lower part of the parking area by Markowski Excavating soon. The Rec Department poised to provide support through maintenance of the field, management of the vending space, and installation of a projection booth, which was another 12 by 12 building donated to us from the Rutland County Parent-Child Center. So it's pretty cool. Cinema Italiano is back at the Brandon Town Hall on Tuesday. Screens of Italian films will start at 7:00 PM on July 14th and run through the end of August. Folks must pre-register for this event. Each evening, Film Commissioner Kristi Cahagan will check in adults using our four-question COVID survey and will enforce social distancing and mask use during the movie. This will be our first inside activity the rec has run since our last Brandon Idol in February. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Are there any questions of the town manager from the board? Start with Giles.
I'm wondering if, does any update on the water meter repair? Do we know?
An update on the water meter repair?
Yeah.
They're doing them. I spoke with Ray today about it. He actually mentioned that you had reached out to him and asked how that was going.
Yeah, I'm just.
Residents got letters. I know that they were doing ones on Saturday, so it's really not. It's, it's the fire district. It's not us, Tim, so I know they're moving along with it.
No, my understanding was they would be updating you regularly. Thinking it made sense to, you know, have it be brought up periodically in our meetings, so we just all feel like we're on top of it. Thanks.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything other than they've been moving forward with it, so. As to how many they've gotten done, I couldn't tell you.
How about Mr. Wyman?
Nothing.
Mr. Bailey, anything for Mr. Atherton?
No, not tonight.
Mr. Coolidge?
No.
I have nothing. Are there any members of the public with any questions for the town manager tonight? I'm not sure how we're going to do this. I think the folks who are on the phone are all not muted. And I hope that the folks who are on Zoom are able to unmute themselves. Any questions for the town manager tonight? Okay, if not, there's opportunity later in the meeting if there's a question on a particular item. So we had added in a new item, which is 44 Prospect Street. This is the property that the town obtained following the death of George Din and Mr. Atherton doing all the work, intensive work to establish an estate for Mr. Din. And Dave, you have, you have some information? You have some offers?
I do. Just one thing on my, back to my town manager's report, the word I couldn't think of was beam. I don't know why I couldn't say is concrete beam, so that's what it was. Yeah, so I apologize for this coming in late today. I was hoping to get this in the packet Friday, but was waiting for some more information this morning. We have received a couple of offers on the 44 Prospect Street property. Just a little memorandum I sent out to you guys today with some attachments. Per the new policy for selling town assets, I've included the following, both offers. The deed that we received that shows the date when we purchased or acquired it and the current lister card. I don't have attorney's fees yet, so that would be, that'll be something I'll have to send to you at a later date or the next meeting. I'm guessing it's going to be around $1,200 for notices and everything. So I know per the new policy, supposed to present this to you guys, you guys look at it till the next board meeting. And then I guess you'll take action after that.
Yes, and I, I think I understand that part of the, the intent of the policy was to make the offers public. So people would know whether or not they were interested in acquiring the property. So it seems to make sense to share the two offers that we received. One for $30,000 and $500, $30,500 and one for $20,000.
What was the top bid? $30,500?
That's right.
What did we approve last, last meeting? We said we would have it for sale for what a figure above what?
$29,000.
So we do have the two offers. Mr. Atherton goes and presented them to the board as the board requested in the new policy. For the new policy, we are not going to act on either of those offers tonight. But we are going to hold them over until at least the first select board meeting. That's after this. So that's the first opportunity. Will have to accept an offer would be two weeks from tonight. Anything else to be said on this?
I'd like to say something. This is Brent Bueller. It's my understanding then that, that it was $20,000 brings it current with taxes and the cost of the appraisal. Is that what I understood from the minutes? Is that correct?
No, I don't believe so, Brent. We had, the town manager had an appraisal done. And I believe that the asking price or the minimum price the select board set was in relation to that. This wasn't a tax sale property, so we're, the town is not under the same, you know, limitations that it would be under a tax sale where we can only recover the taxes owed.
Right. So then if I'm reading the minutes correct, the appraisal was $20,000?
That's my recollection, but Dave, can you help us out?
Yep, that is correct.
Wow.
Yeah, the town has it assessed on 106 or 109,000, so.
I've never heard of an appraisal costing that much, but.
The appraisal didn't cost 20,000. That's what the property was appraised at.
Okay.
It's what the current value is of it. I think it cost 500 bucks.
I got you. Okay. That's what I was saying. I didn't, I couldn't understand from the minutes what it, what it was included. So thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Anything else on 44 Prospect Street? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move along to item four, which is public comment and participation. This is items that don't appear elsewhere on the agenda. We start with the board. Mr. Bailey, anything tonight?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Coolidge?
Say it again.
Nothing.
Nothing tonight. Mr. Wyman?
Yes, I'd just like to acknowledge our construction companies, our local construction companies, especially with Markowskis. That they've, they've been able to keep somebody there on a regular basis, keeping the, keeping the dust control. And all that down on Park Street. And I just, I think that's a great thing. And I think that's one of the good reasons why we need to keep looking at our local contractors for doing work that we've got going on in town.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Mr. Giles?
Yeah, I actually just forgot to ask this for the 44 Prospect. But Dave, I'm curious to know if you posted the property for sale or how, how people knew it was for sale?
From our select board meeting.
Okay, so there hasn't been any published ad or anything like that?
No, I went on vacation the week after, there was a week right after our meeting, so there was nothing posted in the paper.
Okay. Do you think it makes sense to maybe post something this week? Just to?
It's up to you guys. It's not my decision to make. It's up to you guys.
Okay, thanks.
Seth, can I ask something in regard to 44?
Yes.
Thank you. This is, thank you. This is Janet Mondlack. I'm wondering if, since this is being held over, does, is the intent for the holdover so that people can put in, still bid or make off, not bidding on an auction, but can make offers? It is going to set potentially next meeting?
So your, your connection is breaking up a little bit, but I think you were asking about the intent of the policy. And yes, the intent of the policy is that the first offers have been received tonight. And that between now and two weeks from now, when we have the next regular board meeting, it would be in order for other interested parties to submit offers to the town manager.
And if other, so if other offers come in that are higher than the offers received, than the high offer received, then are you, is the board's intent to hold it over again so that other people can react to that?
I believe the board's intent is not to unnecessarily prolong the process, just to make it public and transparent. So that I think if another offer comes in that's higher than your offer, that the town manager would advise you of that before the next board meeting when he receives the higher offer.
Excellent. Fair. Thank you.
Yep. I think that that was kind of the, I think that's a compromised position between letting this linger forever and nobody being able to buy it and otherwise, you know, getting rid of it too quickly. I see Sue Gaia just had her hand up for some time. Sue, can you, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yep, yep. I just had a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Tim Giles, for mentioning an error at the, at the Vermont Department of Taxes regarding everybody's homestead elections and their rebates. Basically, the, the Department of Taxes, they, they failed to pick up the proper municipal rate. And so when people are filing their homesteads, they're getting a letter back saying, oh, no, you're, you've made an error. That's not your municipal tax that you paid when it actually is. So basically, everybody in town is going to get a letter from the state saying they filed the wrong amount, but they did not file the wrong amount. The state made the error and I have been in touch with them. And they are fixing it. And it is going to require recalculating all these tax rebates as well. So everyone's probably going to get a new tax bill unless they can get it fixed before we actually do the tax bills, which I'm encouraging them to do. So again, thanks, Tim, for raising that issue. I was able to get hold of people up there to take care of it. And the second thing is, on August 11th, we have a primary, the Vermont primary election. So far, we've received 724 absentee requests. That's more than anybody's ever voted in the Vermont primary ever. But we're still going to be renting a polling place from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's going to be held at Neeshaby School. It's going to be structured as a drive-through, so people will drive into sort of this tent. And we're going to hand them a ballot. They'll vote in their car, drive around the other side, hand off their ballots and leave. So it'll be minimal contact. And I want to thank publicly the school system for letting us use the lobby at Neeshaby School for our tabulators and the bathrooms. So that's all going to happen on August 11th. That's it for me.
Thank you, Sue. Other folks who are on the call tonight who have something they would like to bring before the board?
Yes, this is Brent Bueller again. Because I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, I, I'm kind of relying on minutes. So it's my understanding from the minutes, the town hall roof is on hold because of the cost? Is that?
Right. There was some re-engineering required. And the amount of engineering or the amount of work that's going to be required to deal with the drainage appears to be getting a little out of hand.
So, you know, I, I agree with Dave in that, you know, it continues to be a hazard. I'm sure everybody agrees with that. So what is the next step?
Mr. Bailey had thought about or suggested snow catchers, kind of those type of things up, up high over the.
Top.
I don't know if Mr. Atherton has explored that or anything further. I know that, and, and I do, I do want to just acknowledge that Dave was on a well-deserved vacation week during the two weeks between the last board meeting and now. So maybe not a lot of items made, made it into the done box. I don't know.
So as far as the roof, I don't know how effective those, you know, the things you put on the, on the ice belt that would actually stop the ice from coming down and gaining speed before it hits the sidewalk. I think we really need to look at putting this in the budget, which means we're going to miss another season of winter with that sidewalk being exposed. Unless we can come up with about $20,000 more to make this happen. I think that, that's still the ultimate way to do it, is get a roof over folks' heads when they're walking in and out there because it is dangerous. But I think when we came up, when we saw the higher cost that we, I thought we discussed that it was going to be a budget item at this point.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bailey?
I'm just wondering how close we are to possibly knowing our final outcome in dollars and cents with Segment Six and maybe some 1% money. You know, if we're talking only 20 extra grand from what we had planned, maybe there's something there, but not knowing where we're at on that Segment Six money yet.
We won't know until the bridge slab's done because that was a change order through Segment Six. So October, maybe. November, maybe.
Okay.
Well, if I may, again, it's my understanding the board approved 30,000 and the Friends of Town Hall approved 15,000. So if the public trust can donate funds for a movie screen, can they donate funds for a shed roof on the town hall?
So Brent, we, the, the select board actually approved for the cost of the project to not exceed 30,000?
Right.
So the, the Friends of Town Hall shipped in, what, 10 or 15? I can't remember now. So we were covering the rest. I, yeah, if we can find the money, I'd love to do it, but we got a lot of pokers on the fire right now.
I see Bill Moore has something perhaps to offer.
Oh, just in regard to the trustee and the public fund who operate outside of the purview of the town, they were approached by the Paramount Theater, by the department to make those, to make the improvements. And they made that decision to, to fund, to fund the drop screen. Just to make sure that was not a rec department request. It was a request by the Paramount Theater and Eric Mallett to the trustees of public funds.
So if I approached them in request for funds for this flood roof on the town hall, would that help? What's the difference? I'm trying to understand because it's my understanding the Shirley Farr thing is improvements of the village in ways not sufficiently provided by taxation. So if I guess that's what it's falling under, then to me, it's, it's tomato, tomato, but.
Well, we'll gladly take donations, Brent, if anyone wants to give. You know, it's, I mean, Bill and I look at this every day and it's just, it's scary. And I, you know, we've been blocking it off so folks don't walk when there's snow on the roof. And I would have loved to have it done this summer.
I know you would.
It's, it's really, it's very concerning. So, you know, I mean, honestly, I think we can probably start looking at maybe some other options. It's been a pretty busy summer so far, but, and I know the folks, the, the contractors that did the estimate and did the drawings are, you know, they, they'd love to get this done this year as well, so. Yeah, maybe we can sharpen our pencils up a little bit, see what we can come up with.
I think it's a wonderful idea for Brent to talk to the trustees of public funds.
I'll write them a letter. I'd be happy to. It, you know, I mean, it's, it's a benefit to the town to have that. And it, it's the only access for, for disabled folks, so.
Absolutely.
It's, it's very important. And, and Dave, you've stated many times what a hazard it is. And I think everybody realizes that. And it puts us in a position of liability, so.
So I do just want to chime in. Mr. Giles is going to speak in a minute. The trustees of public funds, they do have more than just Shirley Farr's bequest, but they also have parameters to work within. And they have a lot of people calling on the trustees of public funds for various projects. And as you rightly say, these are things that are not budgeted for by the town in terms of what the town raises from itself by tax revenue. However, the trustees do have their own processes to try to have an orderly distribution from, from what they have available to contribute to town projects during the year. So I, I would just encourage people not to think of that as like your eccentric uncle with the bottomless wallet. It's, it's not quite that. They're responsible. They're dealing with, you know, market setbacks and so forth related to coronavirus this summer. They're dealing with a lot of demands, including some by the town and many not by the town. So be realistic with them, but do advocate to them, certainly. Mr. Giles?
I was just going to thank Dave for his comment of sharpening our pencils and seeing if we can't find some more money. Because it seems to me that this rises to a sense of necessity and not just a sense of wouldn't it be? of necessity and not just a sense of, wouldn't it be nice to have, you know, a covering? And I think we all appreciate that, that this is becoming a necessity. You know, Brent commented on the liability issue, and at this point, since we've discussed it, it would be a really a tragedy if something happened to them, and here we've talked about it and couldn't find another $20,000. I guess I wonder if there isn't some ability even to deficit spend on this rare occasion because it's so important.
Mr. Chair?
Tim, I think one of the issues right now is that we are at the tail end of so many of these construction projects that have been on the books that it's going to be tight, you know? We're going to be eating our cornflakes with no milk for a little while, so. But I agree, like, this needs to be done, and, you know, I wish we could have done it last year. So we'll see what we can come up with, you know? Seems like sometimes Sue and I can find a pot of gold and fund a project with it, so maybe we can find another one.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bailey?
I'm just questioning, it would seem like we're having some sort of a revenue source from the sale of the 44 Prospect Street property that was probably not known at the time of budgeting. Would that be possibly used towards the roof?
I don't see why not.
Call it the Georgetown Roof.
Hopefully our offers don't get less and less.
Well, no, I mean, we weren't expecting anything there, and it seems like either of those offers would get us over the hump of what we did set aside in the budget to what those changes, you know, what the new bid is, so.
It's a great, it's a great way to look at it, Doug, and it's ultimately up to you guys to make that decision, but if we can...
I don't know.
Let's be nice, you know? No, it's a good idea.
Great point of Mr. Bailey, great suggestion. Additional public comment, we're still in public comment. Anything else anybody wants to bring before the board? Okay, if not, there is additional time at each agenda item. Item five, adoption of the animal control ordinance. I think that was a great hearing. We heard from a lot of folks. We learned some information we didn't have at the beginning of the hearing. What's the pleasure of the board on the animal control ordinance as it was drafted and as the hearing has elucidated it?
I'd like to make the motion that we move to adopt the animal control ordinance as was drafted.
A motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, discussion. I'll discuss. I'm not ready to adopt. I think at minimum, we need to have the town attorney look at it, and I think that there was enough stuff presented at the hearing that we, I'm not convinced that everybody who wanted to offer something at the hearing was able to offer what they wanted at the hearing. I don't know. We might need to have another hearing.
I think that Tim and Seth worked hard in presenting this as a draft, but I agree that there was additional discussion matter in there, and I would think you guys should have a chance to kick that around a little bit to see if there's any additions or changes, and then run it by a lawyer before we adopt it.
Can I just add something under this? I'm trying to stay kind of quiet in it. I think that the big thing right now is, I would like to see the board actually come to terms on what they really want the animal control officer to do. Like, you know, we've heard, we've heard the full spectrum, and does the board draw the line on, you know, what currently is in play with the ACO and then, you know, PD? Or do you create this whole other wellness thing? I think that needs to be the question that's answered first before we move forward. One being, you know, looking at budgeting, again, that's a, that's a pretty big nut to crack in a budget, too, and, you know, we, that's something that certainly, even if an ordinance was done today, we've got to fund that thing somehow. So I just throwing those out there, some of the things that run through my mind. You know, I did find that, you know, Chief Raquel gave me the numbers of, you know, the calls since January of 2018, and 127 sounds like a lot until you break it down, and it comes with 4.3 a month, so that's one a week. Just throwing that out there, so. I just think we need to figure out exactly what it is the board and the town wants to do before we move forward anymore, I guess.
And I agree and think that as sensational as the Hagerty Farm situation is, that's not what you staff to. You know, you, when somebody runs a business, they don't staff to the top peak hours. They staff to the norm, and the Hagerty situation is a, outside the norm that I don't believe an animal control officer or a police department could handle on their own. That took involving the state and the Department of Agriculture and a whole lot of things. And as much as I hope we never see that happen again, we can't just think of that one issue when we're trying to write this policy.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey. Other thoughts?
I guess I might just chime in, since we worked on this together, and say that, yeah, I, I think we have a team of people, you know, a police chief, a town manager, a select board, and a wonderful animal control officer. And a lot of what I feel like this ordinance was doing is trying to find the balance for how all those team members work together. And so, yes, Dave, I would echo, trying to, you know, draw little lines between where one person's responsibility stops and another one starts is definitely where we're at right now.
I totally agree.
I guess I'd agree with Dave and Tim also.
So do you want, do you want Tim and me to take the draft that we had and take the input from the hearing and talk some more amongst ourselves and come back to the board? Or talk some more amongst ourselves and the chief and the animal control officer and the town manager and the lawyer? Or where are we in this?
Do you guys want me to send that to our attorney to review? Do you think it's ready for that?
I would, I would like to see it go to Connie and let her review it. See what her thoughts are on it.
I'd like to see if the authors want to change anything based on information tonight before you have a review, because no sense having two reviews. Or maybe there was nothing that you heard tonight that would make you want to change anything.
You know, one thing I find interesting, that there was, there's a lot of conversation on what the league has said to various people, but this animal control ordinance policy is the model policy from the League of Cities and Towns. So, you know, this was sort of what started it, before I threw renew it, was, well, let's get the model policy. So I'm kind of feeling we're getting conflicting information from the league at this point that, you know, we're basing this new ordinance on their model policy, but yet there's all these other conversations going on, on what we can and can't do. So that's concerning to me.
Speaking for myself, I would appreciate the opportunity to consider what came out of that hearing earlier this evening and to examine the draft that we proposed in light of that, of what came out of that hearing, and to then bring, you know, to confer with Mr. Giles if what we have is what we want to keep, or if what we have needs to be modified. And then come back to the board. Sue Gage has her hand up. Sue?
Muted.
Oh, no, sorry. I had it up a long time ago, so you can put it down. I don't know how to put it down. Sorry about that. It was an old question.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to adopt. Is there more discussion?
I would draw that motion, Seth.
The motion's withdrawn.
Do I need to withdraw the second?
Okay.
I don't think so. I think it's automatic.
All right, so.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Blank slate.
I think Seth and Tim should have one more discussion based on tonight's input and see if there's anything you'd like to change. And if any board member wants to give you input, they should in the next few days.
Tim, does that sound like a good plan?
Um, yes.
Tracy, Brian, does that sound like consensus? Is that all right?
Yeah, that's good to me.
All right, why don't, why don't Tim and I take another look at it in light of what happened, what came out during the hearing? And we'll come back to the board in a couple of weeks, either with a recommendation to adopt what we have or with a modified draft, or with another suggestion which might include a separate ordinance about animal welfare. I think that was kind of the other option that has been batted around. But I would, I would agree that it sounds like we've had some input from VLCT, which might not be consistent with itself, and it would be helpful if we could maybe resolve that. It sounded like Margaret from stuff from, or no, Mike from, I think, from, was it Earl Andy? He's nodding, yeah. And we had some stuff from Garrett Baxter, and, you know, maybe we need to see if there's a tension in those that needs to be resolved. Okay, so I think we'll go forward on consensus with that. That Tim and I will look and come back at the board at the next meeting. Item 5A is Bill Moore's got an item about a communications union district per Act 119. What do you got, Bill?
Hi, everybody. Sorry, first of all, this didn't move your packet. But this is something we could, a few weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, the town signed into a letter of support for a grant that the Regional Planning Commission will put in for broadband innovation to explore the feasibility study on the expansion of broadband in Rutland County.
Bill, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh.
Yeah, your sound is breaking, Bill.
Hold on, let me, let me, this is, I love beer. This is, can you hear me now? Okay, so this is, this is not a demonstration of the internet service and how poor it is in Brandon, but it was certainly timely. So the, we signed a letter of support for the broadband innovations grant that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission was applying for, and they received, which opens up some funds to go to consultants to provide a thorough investigation of the expansion of broadband in and around Brandon or Rutland County, but specifically as Brandon. And they should be receiving those funds in a few weeks, which is great. However, being in close communication with Rob Fish at the Department of Public Service, they strongly suggested that we here in Rutland County get our ducks in a row and create a communications union district. And this is to form an organization that can then apply for grant money to expand broadband for the members of that communications union district. The typically is something that's voted on by a town at a town meeting. Over the legislature and the Scott administration made it possible, things to Act 119, to establish these organizations during the emergency order by way of a select board vote. And we, again, you know, at the point at which we were able to apply for this grant, the state, the people who hand out the money for these kinds of things have strongly encouraged us to form this communications union district. So we just need two towns to form, and then after that, other towns can join in, and we can, we adopt bylaws and become our own organization. It does not tie us to any sort of financing. We can dissolve and decide, you know, at the end of the feasibility study, they realize that it's going to cost $3 trillion to bring broadband to Brandon, so we would decide that wouldn't be a good thing to do, and we would dispay it. But, you know, I strongly encourage the Select Board to consider this resolution, adopted motion, you know, entering us into this communications union district, because, again, the people at the state say that this is the next step. Lemoyle County is doing it, Addison County, we have five towns, and Addison County have done it. We can go across county lines. I'm hoping, as we're speaking right now, that the Select Board in Goshen is meeting and considering it. This letter has also gone out to our friends down to the south in Pittsburgh to consider, and Rutland Regional Planning Commission is soliciting, soliciting support from other Rutland County towns to make this happen. But Brandon can lead in this regard in being the first to vote to form this communications union district.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion that acting pursuant to the authority granted by Section 1 of Act Number 119 of the Acts of 2020 to enter into a communications district to be known as the Otter Valley Communications Union's District.
Mr. Moore?
So there was one version of this that had this be the Otter Valley Communications Union District, and it was decided that Otter Creek would be more inclusive and less confusing for folks when you start talking about acronyms being thrown around. We have OVU, SSD, so Otter Creek Communications Union District is what we are proposing.
And I amend my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Is there a second to Mr. Giles' motion?
Second.
Mr. Bailey makes the second. Is there discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, good, good, hard work, Bill, and I think this is another example, for those on the call listening in or reading about this later, is another example of people at the state level reaching out to Brandon because the town's leadership team has been doing great things and putting, putting money to good use and taking advantage of different avenues that the state has opened up. So I congratulate Bill Moore for being part of that and the town manager also. Further discussion? If not ready to vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That was weak. Oh, Tracy's muted. Is that a yes? Coolidge, you're muted.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that's five to nothing. Any opposed? No, five to nothing.
All right.
We're all in. Item six is appointments. There's a memo.
Are there two more motions with this?
Oh, sorry.
Point representatives? Do I understand that's the next thing?
Yes.
Make a motion to appoint Bill Moore as primary representative and Dave Atherton as alternative representative?
Thanks, Tim, for catching that. Is there a second to appoint Bill Moore as the primary representative to the communications union district and Dave Atherton as the alternate? Tracy says a second. Any discussion?
Dave, am I to assume that you're interested in doing this?
Too late to assume, he just voted on it.
Well, we haven't voted, no.
It's fine, it's fine.
To tell you the truth, if you're not interested, I would be interested, because I'm very interested in this subject, and I just saw your name there and thought you wanted to do it.
No, I don't mind. Bill and I work well together, so.
Okay.
Most of the time.
Okay, ready to vote on the motion for the appointments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? That's the vote. Mr. Moore?
I just wanted to thank you for your, for your support of this, and I think this is a great step for Brandon, for... And I think this is a great step for Brandon, for northern Rutland County, southern Addison County. And I want to thank Representatives Shaw and Jerome for doing the work, the hard work, and making sure that our county stands up and out in the legislature. So again, without their help and support and guidance, this definitely wouldn't have been possible.
And is there a third motion we're going to be doing as well?
Is there another motion, Bill?
About the select board chair and the town clerk signing the resolution?
Bill's muted.
Go ahead, Tim. Thanks.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve the select board chair and the town clerk signing the resolution and appointment document.
Second from Mr. Wyman on a motion for Mr. Giles to have the board chair and town clerk sign the resolution document. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay, thank you for catching those, Mr. Giles. I had neglected them in looking at the paperwork. Item six are the appointments, right? The memo is from Elaine Smith. There's.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd like to just bring to your attention is that we do have a vacancy on the BLSG district now, too. And they've asked if I would sit in on that for a while. So I don't have a problem going through the meetings until we can find someone. But my place, though, did ask if I would be interested in kind of filling in as the, well, the fill-in until we find one. So I don't mind doing that for a while.
Okay, so we want to publicly announce that there's a vacancy on the BLSG for representing Brandon.
Correct.
And you're willing, but we have to vote to appoint you to fill that place until someone expresses interest and we appoint them.
Yep.
Good. Why don't we do that first? Because it's not in the memo. Okay, so is there a motion to appoint Mr. Atherton to the seat, which was Mr. Rausenberger's, on the BLSG to represent Brandon, but to maintain it as an open vacancy for anyone of interest to apply?
Oh, my God.
There's motion? There's a second? Is there discussion? There's not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Good. Mr. Coolidge?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So the rest of the appointments then are on the memo from Elaine?
Correct.
This shows, Dave, you can correct us, it shows there is still a vacancy on the Development Review Board even after we make the appointment tonight?
Yes, we did have one. We have one person that was not interested in renewing their term.
Okay, so a public notification tonight that there's a vacancy on the Development Review Board, and interested parties should contact the town manager. Otherwise, there's a memo from Elaine to appoint, or not to appoint. There's a memo from Elaine saying that these individuals have been contacted and are interested in being reappointed to their boards. Samantha Stone to the Development Review Board for a three-year term. William Mills and Michael Shank to the Planning Commission for three-year terms. Ralph Ethier and Allison Walter to the Planning Commission for one-year terms. And Wendy Bizarro and Catherine Wall to the Revolving Loan Fund Committee for three-year terms. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Giles and Mr. Coolidge. Is there any discussion about these?
We're happy to have them.
I was going to say, yeah, the only thing to be said is thank you to all of these people. These are people who are serving their town as volunteers. And in some cases, it's a considerable investment of time. So we appreciate that, their skill, their participation, and what they bring to the table. All in favor of these appointments, as we've just read them out, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Item seven, the Financial Management Questionnaire. This was from Town Clerk Sue Gage, Town Treasurer Sue Gage. Do you want to introduce it, Sue, to the board?
Sure. So the Financial Management Questionnaire is required. And it's basically a summary of internal controls. It's for your information, I would say, more than anything. And really, you just need to sign off that you've received it. It was created when there were lots of, or a number of treasurers in the state of Vermont were absconding with funds. So this is what inspired this Financial Management Questionnaire to happen. So again, it's like a summary of internal controls. There, we certainly, we get audited every year, so we have a pretty hefty internal control audit every year as well. So I can answer questions if anybody has specific questions.
I think there are some questions on the board. Maybe start with Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, I got four, unfortunately. Sorry, Sue.
No, that's fine.
Going down, the one that says, "Has the select board members attended financial training?" Shouldn't we have an answer, a yes, there? I think three of us have taken the VLCT thing.
I thought I did answer yes. Oh.
There's nothing in that one.
Yep, there is now on mine. I have the master.
Okay.
I think I scanned it before I answered that question. So I'll make sure this master's out for you to sign, Seth, if that's okay.
And then going down, go another six or seven, it says, "Has signature stamp ever been used?" And I don't think you use it now, but because we answered yes, should we not have just some sort of an explanation as to why or when it was used?
No, we still, no, we use a signature stamp. We use it because we have a lot of checks that we sign when we do it every two weeks. It is kept in my drawer, and if anybody's ever been in my drawer, one would never find the signature stamp if you were looking for it. But we do use a signature stamp, and we have always. It is, I think, safely stored. Sometimes I sign checks, but for the most part, we stamp them with a signature stamp. So I guess the question is, if you want us to stop using it, you probably should make a motion to get rid of that.
It's not that.
But it saves a lot of time.
Yeah, I would just expect that an auditor seeing the yes answer would want something in the by whom or explanation kind of area. But I, you know, that's just the banking auditor follow-up that I'm trained with, so.
Yep, yep. So it's my signature that's on the stamp.
Okay. And if it's in your control, and it's a safe control, and I, you know, I'm fine with it. I just thought, you know, that narrative might be there. And then unfortunately, the last two that I'm going to question bring back bad memories to some events last year. But the very next one, "Has there ever been a theft or unauthorized use of town funds or equipment?" Should that not be yes under the roulette problem we had last summer?
Yeah, you're probably right. It should, yeah. I mean, we were made whole, but.
We were made whole, but we still, there, you know, I mean, it depends whether you consider that a theft or an unauthorized use, I think is more what.
Yep.
So I question whether that needs to be updated. And then on the same vein, unfortunately, another four or five down, it says, "Our check's written by the same individual who approves the payments." And I know the answer is no, but I know, again, under that quick pay system, you know, I think that Jackie prepares the checks. So she's the one that is kind of the written of the check. And then you're stamping it or authorization on it. But I know when we were discussing that scenario last year, you know, you had said to us that she approved the bill, so you just had to sign off on it. So, you know, I guess I get the same. The Darrell roulette scenario makes me wonder about that.
I don't approve, I don't technically approve any payments under a town manager system. So basically, what's happening now for those early payments is when Jackie brings a check down for signature, she has the paperwork, and it has Dave having signed off on it. So the check's written by Jackie, approved by Dave, and signed by me. Does that make sense?
It does. It's what, you know, it's what missed because of Dave being on vacation that time. So there was kind of only the approval.
Well, I think, well, no, Daryl was, could approve things at that point. Daryl was the, so, I mean, yeah, that's, we got, yeah. I mean, the person who was allowed to approve things sold us out, basically. So, yeah, which is a sad story.
Okay, those are only my comments on the sheet, so.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey. Sue, if I could just make a personal recommendation, it's not, you know, it's not to tell you how to do anything, but I would encourage you to keep the signature stamp under lock and key.
Yep.
I think that there's an awful lot of risk to have a signature stamp that's accessible.
Well, we have lots of locks and keys in the vault, too. We could just keep it in with the, we could just always keep it in with the petty cash, which is under lock and key.
That would make me feel better if it was my signature.
Yeah.
Everybody knows that it's in your drawer.
Now they do. They never thought, trust me.
Other questions for Sue about this Financial Management Questionnaire?
Do we all sign this, or just the one board representative?
I think just Seth signs it. And I think you just need to acknowledge that you've received it. So I will, so I altered that question. I wish they numbered these. But I altered the question to say yes, that we have, there have been theft or unauthorized use of town funds. And I also had the select board members attended financial trainings. That actually was yes. I think what I scanned to you was a prior version.
Okay. Any other questions for the treasurer about the Financial Management Questionnaire? Okay, if not, I'm just going to pause for a minute. There was a request in the chat here to go over the list of appointees. So I'm going to restate the appointments that we just made. We appointed Dave Atherton to the BLSG, but that's a temporary appointment, and there is a vacancy for anyone who would like to serve. We appointed Samantha Stone to the Development Review Board, and there is one additional vacancy. We appointed William Mills and Michael Shank to the Planning Commission, both for three-year terms. We appointed Ralph Ethier and Allison Walter to the Planning Commission for one-year terms. And we appointed Wendy Bizarro and Catherine Wall to the Revolving Loan Fund Committee for three-year terms. Okay, that's just a restatement. Moving right along tonight. Boy, we're doing something, huh, guys? Item seven. Item eight, the late homestead penalty. What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to penalize late homestead filers? Do you want to have the town of Brandon penalize late homestead filers for the tax year ending June 30th, 2021, or not?
Yeah, I'm interested to understand why we need this. And so if somebody has some background on this, it seems like it would be helpful. It seems that there is one nefarious aspect where somebody might be falsely claiming a homestead and be later shown that it's not a homestead, which deserves a penalty. But it seems like, you know, people that for some reason accidentally don't file a homestead, I don't understand why that should require a penalty.
The brief answer is that it's a late filing, and there's a penalty. And if there's not a penalty for a late filing, why is there a deadline for the filing? So I'll be candid with you. We have in the past assessed this penalty, but we did not, this past, the current tax year, we did not, or the tax year that just ended, we did not, because the motion failed. And I think that this might be a good year to not assess the penalty because tax deadlines have moved, and people's finances are strained in a pretty broad way this year. So I would be happy to not assess the penalty this year. I would move that we do not assess the penalty this year.
I second that.
Is there discussion? No discussion heard. Ready to vote, all in favor of not assessing the late homestead penalty in Brandon this tax year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous then. Item nine is to adopt Act 102. So Sue has provided us a cover memo, which is actually stuff that we're going to do in item 10, and Act 102, which is in item nine here. This has to do with property tax due dates, grace periods, penalties, interests, and fees. We're certainly not going to reduce the tax rate itself, but we have authority, if we adopt Act 102, to do the other things. Is there a motion about Act 102?
I'm old.
Mr. Wyman moves to the top. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Coolidge gives the second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. This Act 102, I thought, was something the state took action on, and then it's in effect right now. And we're allowed to make these choices because of that. I don't quite understand what we're adopting.
Well, we have to adopt it because of item B in the first page there. The act permitted may be adopted by majority vote of the legislative body.
Okay.
If we want to do any of those things, we have to adopt the act. And I believe we're going to do one of those things tonight. Further discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the provisions of Act 102 related to temporary municipal tax rate provisions in response to COVID-19, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Item two, postponement of the first property tax due date to September 15. So as allowed by Act 102, we can change tax due dates this year. There's a memo from the town clerk and treasurer recommending that we change the first tax due date to September 15 because the processing of tax bills will not be completed until early August, and the statute requires that the tax bills go out at least 30 days before the first due date. Pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to, yeah, postpone the first property tax due date till September 15.
Motion for Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. Any discussion about postponing the first property tax due date to September 15? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. And Sue, I think I understood from your front porch forum that we postponed September 15, but the others would stay on the normal schedule?
That would be my recommendation, yeah.
And that would be, what, November?
November. So this year, we'll have September 15, November 15, February 15, and May 15 is the final.
Thank you for that clarification. So that's great for the record. September, November, February, and May 15 for the quarterly payments. Okay, item 11, the warrants. Is there a motion on any or all of the warrants?
Let's make a motion on all of them.
Okay, there's a motion to approve all the warrants as they've been submitted. Is there a second?
I got it.
There's a second from Mr. Wyman. Are there any questions about any of the bills?
This is the question about payroll warrants. I'm curious to know if the amounts for the payroll warrant are. I, I'm curious to know if the, the amounts for the payroll warrant are public information.
So this is something that, I think I lobbed to the town manager right before vacation. Don't know if he's thought about it at all. So the question is, should the total of the payroll warrants be included in the warrants to be approved, recognizing that including the actual payroll warrant would not be advisable, because it might reveal some confidential employee information?
Yeah, why, why would we do that? Why would we do that, I guess? What's, what would the reasoning behind that?
I, I'm, I guess the reason why I ask is just to understand what's public information and what's not. And, and if it's public, then it seems like it should show up in our package as warrants. And if it's not, I'm just curious to understand what's, what's private and what's public.
I mean, we put, we put the total amounts paid in the town report every year, but I, hmm. I don't know. I guess I would have to look into that to see what sort of privacy issues there are, Tim, but it just seems kind of odd that we would have a select board voting yea or nay on a payroll warrant.
Yeah, I mean, um.
It's really not negotiable at that point.
Right, right. I, I think, I think the part that just puzzled me is, is that I find myself signing the payroll warrant when I come by to sign forms. And it seems like it's money that's going out and that it represents public information in some sense. And I'm just kind of, I, I'm, I'm curious as to, as to what level of public those checks are.
I'll, I'll look into it, Tim. I have no idea, but it just seems a little odd. I mean, you guys vote on the pay increases during budget process and, you know, insurance stuff. I don't know. I, I've never, never heard of that before. No one's ever raised a question, so I can look into it.
I, I guess, I, I guess the thing that, that logically stuck with me is the idea that, you know, at the select board meetings are when we authorize payments. It's like, that's what the warrants are all about, and this is one form of payment. And so I, it's logical to me that it would come through as a warrant, that we would vote, kind of like we do all the other ones.
I mean, haven't we already voted, haven't we already voted when we've, when we've given them that job, that we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to pay them on a weekly basis? Would be my thought, but, and Seth, I get to withdraw my second.
What's that, Tracy?
I need to withdraw my second.
Oh, okay. Can I get another second? There's a, from Coolidge. Second from Bailey now. Thank you. Charlie, can you make, thank you.
I guess I just don't understand things. I mean, it's really none of my business, I guess, at this point, but why would the select board want to vote on a payroll? I mean, it's just, there's nothing that's negotiable that we, you know, withhold someone's paycheck because there's an issue with.
I'm not suggesting.
No, no, it's, it's kind of like the, the construction warrants, you know, I, I, we, we're not gonna withhold money at that point either. And, and yet, we go through the process, so it's public, and it's like, it's us spending money, and it's us saying that, you know, it's okay to spend the money. And, and I, I hear you, Tracy, that, you know, when we hire someone, it's kind of implied. I, I just find it odd that I sign warrants each payroll period that haven't come up in the meeting. And so it just seemed logical to me that they would have come up in the meeting.
It used to only be that the chair would sign the warrant, so I guess I'm wondering why everyone signs it now. I don't know.
Is that something, Sue, do you have any pointers on why that warrant appears the way it does, or what the process ought to be?
I, I really don't. I was just reading some stuff in the, in the statutes about public records. I'd have to look into it. I, I'm not sure. I don't know much about that at all.
Okay. Dave, can you look into it with the league or with Connie or?
Yep, it's on my list.
Thank you for putting it on your list. Are there any questions about individual bills within the warrants, the three warrants that are open? If there are not, and we're ready to vote, all in favor of warrants A for the, for the current year, and C for Route 7, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman abstains. Four, zero, and one. Okay, so then there's an executive session, but we've also got a liquor meeting and a sewer meeting to do. So we'll recess the select board at 8:25. We will call the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners meeting, meeting to order at 8:25. Is there a motion on the agenda?
I'll move.
Mr. Wyman moves the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Coolidge. Any discussion on the agenda? Anything to add? If not, all in favor of the agenda as it appears, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Is there any public comment on the liquor control meeting? Anybody have anything to say on the liquor control meeting?
Um, I, I do. Brent Buehler here. Um, I, I recently asked the zoning administrator about the permit process for the deck that went up behind the distillery, and I believe they were required to have a permit. I'm not quite sure from his answer. Are they required then to, I didn't see where they applied to serve alcohol outside, so. That would be my question.
That is a good question. I do not recall whether we have recently seen an outside consumption permit, but that doesn't mean we haven't. I just don't recall. I don't see it in the minutes of the previous meeting.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it in past, recent past history, so that would be my question. And then, I guess I'd, I'd like to ask the board, do they, did they need a permit for the deck? I really, like I said, didn't get a clear answer from.
They have a permit.
Zoning.
They have a zoning permit for the deck. When they originally did, when they originally did the permit out there, the permit on the back was mistakenly written as loading dock.
That I recall, yes.
And I, I believe that our zoning administrator has done a corrective permit for it. That's what I was told the last time I talked to him about it.
Okay, 'cause his response was the original permit had long been expired or whatever, you know, had come and gone. So I, I do remember the loading dock. Yes, Dave, I do remember that.
Yeah. It was definitely an error in the permit, so I think, I think it has been corrected.
Thank you.
And I don't know if they need outside consumption. Did we ever do outside consumption for maize when they were at their other building with their, with their deck?
Yes, yes, we did.
Yeah.
It's definitely required.
Even if there's no access to it from?
Yes.
I think whenever you're not within the four walls of the building, yes.
Okay. I don't know. That's all I do.
Can I get a question?
Yes.
Brent, you asked the zoning administrator about the tent above the, what place is it? Did he say the distillery?
This is referring to the deck that was built behind the Ripton Mountain Distillery.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Brent, to kind of follow up on your question, I, I don't know whose purview it is to see whether there is a valid outside consumption permit. I suppose we could look and see if we have one on file in the town first, and then attempt, if there is not, we could attempt to bring compliance, because compliance is always the goal, right? Uh, so perhaps we could ask the town manager to make a, a check with the town clerk and see what's downstairs in terms of that property and permits?
Terrific. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, is there any appetite to take items two and three as a consent agenda? That means that we would approve them without debate. If you have questions or debate, we could do that instead. Tracy?
I would, I would do that.
Uh, Mr. Wyman moves item two, approval of the minutes, and item three, review of the special event permits previously approved by the town clerk as a consent agenda. Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a second from Mr. Bailey. Is there any objection? All in favor of taking two and three as a consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Item four is to move adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the liquor commissioners' meeting?
Yeah, I'll move.
Motion and a second from Coolidge and Wyman at 8:30. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. The liquor commissioners are adjourned. At 8:30, at 8:30, I call to order the Brandon Board of Sewer Commissioners and ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll move.
Mr. Coolidge moves, and Mr. Bailey seconds. Any changes to be made? If not, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I quote, say no. The ayes have it. Is there public comment or participation? Sue Gage?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not acting as a clerk or treasurer. I'm acting as just a sewer user now. So I have an interesting, complex kind of backyard right now, really big garden back here, that somebody else actually uses our land for it. And I also have four pigs who drink copious amounts of water. And it's a really dry year, so we're using tons and tons of water on the garden. And I just don't know, like, I have no problem paying for water, but it's really hard to think of all those gallons that are not going in the sewer and paying for sewer. Is there any, I guess I'm asking, like, what should I do? Should I dig a well? Should I, I mean, how do I deal with this? Like, can I put another meter on the outgoing water? I, I, what do people do when this happens? I, I just, I don't know what to do, but I, but I'm gonna end up with a huge sewer bill for stuff that's not going in the sewer system.
That is not an original situation. I know that, I, I don't want to speak for the fire district, but I believe the fire district does not advocate placing a second service with a meter that is just water and not sewer. Dave, do you have, is that, can you confirm that?
Yes, and I do believe back sometime when the sewer ordinance was redone, that the board, the select board had decided to not credit people for filling pools or anything else like that, that if it's coming in, it's going out somewhere.
So, I, I empathize with your situation. My wife is a gardener and my mother-in-law, and they use a ton of water that I pay for. And just like you, I do not begrudge paying for the water, but I know I'm paying twice that amount for the sewer. And it's not going in. It's just into the ground and perking away, and it's not ever getting used. And the ordinance that we have now doesn't have any allowance for that, because we have no way to measure it.
Yeah. So really, we don't have a solution. I, I am, I did call the well driller. I mean, I may be, I might just, it may be worth it just to, I've got an old well. I might just re, you know, get that old well a little deeper and see if I can use that. But it really is a drag. It makes me think I had my old sewer system.
If, if you're using water to water your garden because it's a dry year, it's likely that an old dug well would be dry in the year like this, too.
The old, yeah. We all, we start with the old well. We always, in, in some summer, you can get through all the way with that well. But this summer, it's been dry a month already, so, yeah, that well's not doing us any good right now.
So just because I didn't have a good solution doesn't mean someone else might have a good idea. And I would love to hear if someone else has any thoughts on this.
Well, did I hear you say that there are some water hookups that are non-sewer hookups?
There are a few that are non-sewer hookups, just because the sewer doesn't run past that house. And there is probably less than a handful of water services where sewer does run by, but the person has two water hookups. One for their house, which is metered and goes to the sewer, and one for their, either gardening or pool, which is metered for water use only and doesn't get counted against a sewer bill.
Yeah, I would suggest that for Sue, because if she really has a large volume, especially because I know the farm is a commercial enterprise, and so it really represents, you know.
So, Tim, why, if it's a commercial enterprise, why shouldn't they be paying for water? And then how do you determine how that water's being used? And I don't want to pick on Sue, but, you know, should you get a discount for washing your car or, you know, filling your pool? I mean, where do you draw the line there? I think.
These are good questions. I, I, I think the, the point that, the reason I asked Seth, you know, with some accounts that are water-only, those represent, you know, places where you can prove that the water's not going in the sewer.
But they don't pay sewer if it's water-only.
Exactly. And so I'm suggesting in Sue's case that she pays for all the water, but she only pays for the sewer for the substances inside her house.
How do you determine that, though?
Well, if she had a separate account with a hookup, outside connection that was going to the farm, that would be one solution. And she would just have two accounts, an outside account and.
So who pays for the water meter, and then who does the billing on that? I mean, that's, there's more to, and I know we went through this, and I'm looking when we did the sewer abatement policy. That's when it was done, and that was, I don't know, when we do it, 19, I guess, so it's not even that old.
But a service, and you, you pay to get the water installed, and so it would be the same thing. She would just be getting a second service at her, at her property.
Right, so like, on my spare lot, if I were to put a water, some sort of, like, Tim, Tim Kingston has one outside his barn. He's got this big water thing where they give the horses baths, and it's not, I don't think it's connected to his house water.
But they would still have to pay the regular hookup fee.
Right.
And get water for free.
No, no, I'm not suggesting water for free.
No, no, no. I'm just trying to figure out how, how I can obtain water that's, that's not going in the sewer.
So I, I guess the, you know, the short answer is that you, you call Ray and see if the fire district will give you another tap and a meter and pay the fire district for a second service. Like, I know that there's two properties on my street where that's the case.
So where do we draw the line on that? I mean, if everyone's got gardens and everyone washes their cars, is everyone gonna come to the town and the water district and say, hey, we want separate water that we don't have to pay meter for sewer, because, well, it's not going down our drain, it's going in our driveway, or going in our garden?
I would have a problem if people wanted multiple services, and the fire district was willing to install them, and the people are paying the meter install fee.
For most people, it's hard to be the cost of putting it in, because it's not small. I mean, in my case, I had to dig under the road to hook up to the, you know, main service. So I mean, it, it could be costly.
It would be costly in my, I mean, it's gonna be costly in my, I'm either gonna have the well driller come or hook up another water meter, I guess, so it's gonna be costly up their way.
They have, they have, they have flow meters that hook right on.
They won't do that. They're not gonna do that. No, no. All right, they, they won't do that. It's, it's gonna be separately metered.
Well, I mean, the person, the home, homework. We're gonna have to redo our sewer abatement policy if we make that happen.
Why?
Why? Because we have the typical unallowable abatements, and two is outdoor use of water for car washing or lawn, lawn watering. So, you know, if people do the, I just, we're gonna have to redo it, that's all.
I don't think we'll have to redo it. It's just that people who have two water meters, you'd only, they, they would have a sewer bill for the one that is connected to their house in the sewer. And if they paid to have a second water service, and they paid the meter fee, and they paid all the, you know, assessments for Route 7 water improvements and all this kind of stuff, then they don't get a sewer bill on that one, because it's.
Isn't there a minimum fee also, even for the usage as well?
I mean, yeah, there is, and I think that that's why some people investigate and decide that it's not worth it to them.
Exactly.
The other thing is, we're, we're trying to make these assumptions and raising one, it needs to give you the answers to them all.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he said, he said, that's why, but I. Well, he sent you, that's why, but I'm gonna hit him up next.
He sent you to us?
Yeah, because I initially asked if I could get a meter on my hose to deduct from, you know what I mean, the stuff that was coming into the garden. And so that was my first question. He said, you need to collect to the Board of Sewer Commissioners for that. So I think that's a no. So I was just wondering if there, what options there were, whether you had any. So I'll go to Ray next and see about a water hookup, a separate water hookup. Thank you.
Sorry, not better news. That said, is there any other public comment or participation tonight on the wastewater commissioners? And if not, is there any opposition to taking approval of the minutes and the purchase order for sludge processing as a consent agenda?
I'm on it.
No objection was heard. Coolidge moved. Wyman seconded, I think. All in favor of taking items two and three as a consent agenda to approve the minutes and do the sludge processing in Rutland, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Item four, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I got it.
Second from Mr. Bailey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Forty-one, the sewer commissioners are adjourned.